Well, good evening and welcome to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Tuesday evening, April 3rd, 2018. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week. I am Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protim Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Hello, everyone.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
And to her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Chaplain Russell Thompson from the Lexington Police Department to come up and offer invocation for tonight's meeting, and thank you for being here. My Honor, shall we pray? Heavenly Father, I ask now that you guide and direct each member of the council. We thank you for their dedicated service, for their diligence. We ask that you help them with their decisions, deliberations, and also, Father, I pray that you'll continue to guide them in providing administration for the benefit of the citizens of the Town of Lexington. And I, Father, ask that you bless each of us, protect us. I pray, Father, you'll smile upon us and be gracious to us and show us your favor and bring us peace. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Thompson. I see we have a little scout in the room tonight. Be honored if you would come step to the microphone and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Good job. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session this evening. This evening, we had two legal issues, one issued discussion of pending litigation and one issued legal advice regarding town ordinance. We had three contractual issues. We had an economic development matter, an issue regarding utilities contract, and the purchase and sale of town property. We also had one personnel item. It was an item relating to boards and commissions. No vote was taken in the meeting tonight. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
Seven.
We have a motion by Councilmember Manis and a second by Councilmember Baker. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Deletions on the agenda. Are there any other deletions on the agenda other than to pull item number six from new business from tonight's agenda? Any other deletions on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, we will move right into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes for council work session on March 19, 2018 were provided in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to council work session, March 19, 2018? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Seven.
We have a motion by Councilmember Manis.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Baker. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. At this time, we will move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is from Mr. Bill Shanahan of the Lexington County Blowfish.
He's on the way.
He's on the way, so we'll move into Sec. Number Two proclamation from Councilmember Kathy Manis, National Service Recognition Day. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. A proclamation of the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington, designating April the 3rd, 2018, as National Service Recognition Day, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas Amerycores and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to national disasters, and supporting our veterans and military families, and whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resistant communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, City of Service, and local leaders across the country. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington that Tuesday, April the 3rd, 2018, is hereby declared National Service Recognition Day, and we encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteerism in our town and to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their community. Dated this third day of April, 2018, Stephen McDougall, Mayor. And we will be mailing this to the National Service, to the Corporation for National and Community Service in Washington.
Very good. Thank you very much. As we are still waiting on Mr. Shanahan, we'll move into the vision plan and traffic update. I will move into the vision plan for April 2018 update. The Ice House Amphitheater, the Town of Lexington proudly presents Lexington Live Spring Concert Series at the Ice House Amphitheater. The first concert begins next Thursday, April 12th, at 6:30 PM. This is a free concert to anyone who would like to come out and see it, and will feature the band The Men of Distinction. The following Thursday, April 19th, will be Bombshell. April 26th will be The Finesse Band. May 3rd will be The Tams. May 10th will be Tokyo Joe, and May 17th will be The Root Doctors. All of these are held on Thursday evening, beginning at 6:30, and they are free to the public. For more information or a full calendar of events, please visit IceHouseAmphitheater.com. Secondly, the Farmer's Market. The Town of Lexington Farmer's Market will kick off the season on Saturday, May the 5th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Lexington Square Park. The market will run each Saturday from May to September. Applications are still being accepted for vendors for the 2018 season. If you are interested in becoming a vendor, please contact (358) 7275, or email us at And finally, the Lexington Wine Walk. The Eighth Annual Lexington Wine Walk on Main will take place Saturday, May 12th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Ice House Amphitheater, located at 107 West Main Street. Local musical sensation, The Going Commando Band, will perform classic rock, country, and blues hits throughout the night. Tickets are $30 each and include a commemorative wine glass, wine tastings, and hors d'oeuvres. For more information, you are interested in being a participant or a participating restaurant or exhibitor, please visit our website at LexingtonWineWalk.com. Like us on Facebook and follow us on Twitter, or email us at LexingtonWineWalk@gmail.com. This is a 21 and older event, so you must have a photo ID to enter the event. That is the vision plan update for April 2018. It looks like Walker is trying to do a year's worth of work in two months. Everything's happening at amphitheater. Very good. At this time, we will move into a traffic update from Mayor Protim.
Mr. Mayor, before I go forward, Walker, great job this weekend on both the events that were at the Ice House Theater, the Good Friday service that the churches held, and the barbecue and blues. They both were excellent events. The SC-6 One Way Pair Projects continues with construction activity along North Lake Drive and Main Street. Please expect minor delays in and around these areas over the next few weeks. If I'm not mistaken, we expect this to be finished, Randy, sometime mid-June. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, May the 16th, 2018, at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway, potholes, or anything that's in need of repair as far as roads, please call (358) 7273. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Mr. Poole, Mr. Cunningham, would it be all right if we moved into presentations? I'm sorry, into our next public hearings before we can come back to this other presentation?
That's your discretion, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4496-02-030, located at 5229 Sunset Boulevard. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Moving on, item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-04-040, located adjacent to 4765 Sunset Boulevard. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. Item number three, final reading of an amendment to the Landscape and Tree Ordinance. Anyone here wish to speak to that? And finally, final reading of the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance. Anyone here wish to speak to that? If you would, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is DJ Stone. I'm here representing The Blended Bakery. Our address is 210 Claremont Lakes Drive in Lexington.
Very good.
In regards to the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance, some of the things that, as we've come across recently, that may help with the council in this particular issue addresses the proximity as it relates to in the ordinance being in proximity to open restaurants. Just a couple of things for council to consider. Global Kentucky recently removed their 150-foot restriction as part of a settlement with two food truck operators who alleged that the proximity rule was unconstitutional. They took action preemptive to the lawsuits being filed. Also, the Institute for Justice is currently in litigation with Baltimore and Chicago over similar restrictions. They have been able to get some cities like El Paso and San Antonio to back off of similar restrictions. For us, what we're feeling like is that that proximity rule is kind of favoring one business over other businesses, and so we would like for the council to reconsider the proximity rules as it pertains to food trucks being able to operate. Currently, with that rule in the town, three out of the five locations that we proposed during the working session were within, were underneath that 200-foot rule. One of those was kind of questionable as to why we would go and set up at that location, and then the only other location that we presented, which was Lexington Medical Center, was within a 200-foot radius of, or not within a 200 feet, but it was able to set up there, but we would not be able to set up there very frequently just based off of their needs at the medical center. So we're just asking council to reconsider that proximity rule.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Anyone else wish to speak to the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearing, and like he's right on cue, we will move to our first presentation from Mr. Bill Shanahan from the Lexington County Blowfish. Welcome. Thank you for being with us tonight. We were on time tonight. I apologize.
Well, thank you. Sorry, we're running a couple of minutes behind schedule.
No problem.
Of course, my wife, Vicky, and our general manager, Theo Baco. We're here also representing John and Kelly Klinger, the owners of the Old Mill Brew Pub. We are here to present a check to the Town of Lexington and Chief for the Adopt a Cop Program that we raised some money for the Chili Cook-Off, and you have that check. Chief here?
He's right behind you.
You got money, I'm right behind you.
We had to schedule the Chili Cook-Off three different times because of the weather, but I'm so thankful that it took place at the beautiful Ice House Amphitheater once again. All the Town of Lexington was very cooperative, of course, and came out in droves. It was a great crowd, and we'd like to present a check, and I will sign this for you. I was ready to sign it as I came in, but I knew I was late. I'll do that right now, for $1,500 for the Adopt a Cop Program.
Very good.
Yeah, we gotta get some pictures. So usually, I'm not a man of few words, but I'm gonna leave it at that and just say, "Thank you. We love being here in Lexington." Got some more exciting things getting ready to announce right up here on Main Street with the Blowfish on Main Store. Stay tuned and get ready for Blowfish Baseball. It's hard to believe our fourth season coming up in the end of May. So, there we go.
Very good. Thank you.
You bet. Where are we going?
Right here.
Oh, by the way, I've got schedules for you.
Oh, good.
Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you. That was Jackson. Mark it.
Left side. Nice going.
You know what? You guys can do it. We're going over here. Absolutely. How'd you know?
I know.
Oh, okay, got it.
All right, it's right here. Wait, wait, wait.
One more. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, we're good. Thank you. You bet. John and Kelly couldn't be here. John is in Israel.
Oh, is that right?
Helping with world peace, is what I heard. Kelly had to carry his ship down to Old Mill Brew Pub, so we're just representing here as well.
Thank you all. Thank you. Good to see you.
Hey, Bill, before you leave, I just wanted to say thank you, and you said something earlier about how much you love being here. We love the fact that you chose Lexington as your home, and we really appreciate you being in our community.
Well, go us both ways. Thumbs up.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. At this time, we will move into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-04-040, located adjacent to 4765 Sunset Boulevard. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sam Jones Lexington LLC owns six acres in the 4,700 block of Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. A Hampton Inn Hotel is planned on a portion of the property. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their March meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, final reading of an amendment to the Landscape and Tree Ordinance. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sam Jones Lexington LLC owns six acres in the 4,700 block of Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. A Hampton Inn Hotel is planned on a portion of the property. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their March meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, final reading of an amendment to the Landscape and Tree Ordinance. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council is considering an amendment to the landscaping and tree ordinance to address the issue of trees being planted too close to the sidewalk, particularly in areas where there is a grass strip between the sidewalk and the road. As these trees mature, their root systems often uproot portions of the sidewalk and create not only trip hazards, but also require recurrent and costly repairs on the part of the town. The proposed ordinance is attached. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, final reading of the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council has discussed the passage of a Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance to allow mobile food vendors to operate within the town limits. Attached is an ordinance which specifies rules and regulations for licensing and operation of such vehicles. Regulations are drafted after a study of seven such ordinances in other South Carolina municipalities. A permit fee is already established for the zoning permit required to operate pursuant to the ordinance. The ordinance was given first reading approval at the March council meeting. Town Council referred it back to the work session for further discussion in March. Revisions have been made to the ordinance per the direction given at the March work session. I'd like to make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protim, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, first reading approval of an ordinance to acquire property off of Porsche Drive. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Scepter Enterprises LLC, or Scepter, has requested that the town allow the Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission to provide sewer service to a parcel off of Industrial Drive and Porsche Drive. The area is the town, the area is in the town service area. However, the commission has a gravity line that runs adjacent to the parcel, which would relieve Scepter of the need to construct a pump station for sewer service. The town has agreed to release the parcel to the commission in exchange for approximately 0.92 acres of property adjacent to the town's Porsche Drive water tower. The property would serve as the location of a new water tower anticipated to be constructed in the future. I make a motion for a first reading approval of an ordinance to acquire property off of Porsche Drive.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number two, our next item of new business is from Mayor Protim Hazel Livingston, first reading approval of an ordinance to purchase property. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council was asked to purchase a piece of property in the town limits that consists of roughly four acres. The proposed contract price is $288,400. The property purchased is necessary to accommodate one of the town's upcoming road projects. The seller has requested to remain anonymous until the time of the transfer. I make a motion for first reading of approval for an ordinance to purchase property title only.
Mayor Protim makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, first reading of an ordinance to issue combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds of 2018. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The town's currently adopted Waterworks and Sewer System Capital Improvements Plan for the next five years includes approximately $28 million in projects. The overall financing plan includes a mix of capital contribution fee income, retained earnings, and revenue bond issuance. During fiscal year 2018, the financing plan includes the issuance of revenue bonds to refund the $10 million waterworks and sewer system bands maturing on June 1st, 2018. A series of bands provided interim financing for the related projects, and these bonds are the permanent financing. I make a motion for first reading approval of an ordinance to issue combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds of 2018.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carron, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, Boards and Commissions Applications. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two applications have been received for appointment to Town of Lexington Boards and Commissions. Mrs. Julia Bartel submitted a Boards and Commissions application and indicated an interest in serving on the Traffic Committee or the Virginia Hilton Park Committee. Mrs. Bartels is a town resident. Mrs. Jeanette Lowisk with Wingate by Wyndham was transferred to another city, and Ms. Jana Medlin with Wingate by Wyndham submitted a Boards and Commissions application to fill the vacancy on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Ms. Medlin is a town resident and qualifies to serve as a hospitality industry representative. At the March 19th, 2018 work session, council discussed appointing Mrs. Bartels to the Traffic Committee and the Virginia Hilton Park Committee, and appointing Ms. Medlin to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for council approval of these appointments.
Councilmember Carron makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protim makes a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, to approve these two, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, the Ice House Amphitheater rental policy change. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the March 19th work session, council discussed changes to the Ice House Amphitheater rental policy. The proposed updated policy is attached. I'd like to make a motion for council's approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'm seconding.
Councilmember Manis, second. Some motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Brew, I'd like to thank you for Thursday night as well. Wonder Woman was a good movie. I enjoyed coming out, saw a lot of kids enjoying themselves, a lot of families enjoying themselves, and I appreciate you putting the work into revamping this policy to make it a little bit more usable for the town and for the community.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carron.
Just a quick question. I don't think we changed anything about the insurance requirements in this change, did we?
I don't believe so.
So, I was just curious, has that ever been a hurdle for a bunch of our nonprofit groups that, like when churches come together and they do a service like they recently did, I mean, how do they handle the liability requirements on that?
I think generally, they just get a rider on existing property insurance policies. There's some cost to that, and it depends on your company, how much it is, and what you're doing, but I would, I mean, the real cost comes in if you're serving alcohol, and most of the churches aren't, so theirs isn't all that much.
So, it hasn't been a hurdle?
I'm not aware of anybody on any of our rentals that's not rented because of insurance. It could have happened, but I'm not aware of it in whatever, 12 years.
You aware of any?
No, sir.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protim Hazel Livingston, Midlands Rivers Coalition. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, the town became a member of the Saluda River Coalition, which was made up of river-related businesses, environmental groups, local and state government, property owners, industry, and other river users. The goal is to ensure the safety of the natural waters for recreational use by doing more frequent monitoring to supply data to the river users so they can make informed decisions on when they can recreate on the river. The Coalition has now enhanced the monitoring program to include additional sampling locations on the Saluda and Broad River. Sampling will start this year in May and go through September. The Coalition has changed its name to the Midlands Rivers Coalition in order to include the Broad River. Their funding will still be collected and administered by the COG. DHEC will hold a public hearing on April 3rd, 2018, at 6:30 at DHEC and People's Auditorium at 2600 Bull Street, Columbia, to update the public on the Coalition, the Summer Monitoring Program, the 208 Plan, and issues with the evaluation of the NPDES permit renewals. The town pledged $2,000 last year towards monitoring for the Coalition, and is being asked to pledge $2,000 again this year to assist in the continued monitoring of the rivers. I make a motion for approval of $2,000 for the Midlands Rivers Coalition.
Mayor Protim makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our final item of new business is from- Our final item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Midlands Technical College Fast Track Program. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Midlands Technical College is looking to host the Fast Track Program with the Town of Lexington, which will allow 20 local new and existing business owners to participate in the course. The Fast Track Program will take place each Tuesday evening for 10 weeks from August to October in the Eli Mack Room. Midlands Technical College is requesting the use of the Eli Mack Room for free along with the town contribution of $5,000, which will pay for the course for 20 participants, or the town could pay a portion and require the difference to come from the participants. Mr. Tom Ledbetter, the Director of Midlands Technical College Center for Entrepreneurial Success, will be the facilitator, and council would provide a list of potential participants. The value of the Eli Mack Room rental would be $75 per meeting plus a one-time refundable deposit of $100, plus $1,250 for the tech package, all of which will be waived for a nonprofit. I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem, second. Some motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carons.
If I could, I would like to offer a proposed amendment to the motion. Is now my time I can do that?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I would, I would make a motion that council approve half of that amount, $2,500, and that the other $2,500 be paid by the participants in a cost share scenario, and that we make our contribution contingent upon having at least 15 participants in the program. This is my understanding that, that there's a max of 20, but there is a cost share possibility there, and the cost share for each participant would be $125, and we would pick up $125. That would be my motion.
Just one comment, Mr. Carons, that in our last meeting downstairs, we had Mr. Ledbetter here, and there was a $3,000 minimum, if you remember. It was in our minutes tonight's meeting.
A $3,000 minimum?
Yes.
Regardless of the number?
I think if the low, if the count was low enough, the cost would be reduced such that, but it would never go below $3,000.
Okay, very good.
That was my understanding, and Mr. Ledbetter.
That's right. Very good. Mr. Carons makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Paul.
Could I interrupt and make a suggestion? It might be easier to facilitate if the, if the motion was that the participant, the participant pays $125 and the town pays the difference. And the reason I put it like that is if there's 18, there might be a different cost share amount, but if we lock in $2,500, then, but if we just say that the participant has to pay half of the cost, or $125, I think is what you suggested, participant pays $125 and the town pays the difference, that might be easier, because I can see that number being moving based on how many we had.
Agreed.
So, what is the motion?
So, I will amend my motion to, to say that our participation is contingent upon each participant paying $125 for their share, and the town would pick up the rest of the fees, whether they be $3,000 or $5,000.
Very good. Councilmember Carons makes an amended motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very good. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. On behalf of the mayor and council, we hope everyone had a wonderful Easter holiday and that the kids have a safe spring break this week. We would also like to wish Councilmember Kathy Manis a happy birthday this Thursday. Happy birthday. Congratulations to our finance director, Kathy Roberts, and Randy Farr. They were married on Saturday and left on Sunday for a honeymoon trip to the mountains. Our best wishes to Kathy and Randy. It's All About Erbs Festival is this Saturday at the Lexington Museum from 9 to 3. The town is a sponsor of the event, so we hope everyone will come out and enjoy the festival, and it's free. As the mayor stated in the vision plan update, our Thursday concert series, Lexington Live, is back starting April 12th for six weeks at 6:30 PM at the Ice House Amphitheater. We'll start the season with none other than the Men of Distinction. The concerts are free, so come out and enjoy the music. Other concerts in April are on April 19th with Bombshell, on April 26th with Finesse, and more to come in May. Visit icehouseamphitheater.com for a listing of all events. Council will meet again on April 16th at 6:00 PM for the council work session in the Eli Mack Room. The Planning Commission will meet on April 18th at 8:00 AM here in the council chambers. The Pleasant Hill Middle School Choir will perform at the Ice House Amphitheater on April 24th at 7:00 PM. Kids' Day is back for its 18th year. Join in on the fun on April 28th here at Town Hall from 10:00 AM till 2:00 PM. Thousands come out every year for this event, and it's free to the public. The town will host a Rolling Stones tribute band, Satisfaction, on April 28th at 6:00 PM. This will be a great concert, so go online or go to the Old Mill Brew Pub to purchase advance tickets for $16. The Lexington Community Band will perform at the Ice House Amphitheater on April 29th at 2:00. This event is also free to the public. Looking a little forward into May and before our next meeting, there are more great events coming. On May 3rd at 6:30 PM, Lexington Live with the Tams at the Ice House Amphitheater. May 4th at 7:00 PM, Lexington High School Jazz Band at the Ice House Amphitheater. And on May 5th, from 9:00 AM till noon, the famous town of Lexington's Farmers Market is back. For more details, visit lexscfarmersmarket.com. As you can see, there is always something to do in Lexington, especially in the spring. We encourage everyone to go outside and enjoy your town. We hope you enjoy the many free events hosted by the town, and we have received great feedback and encourage your ideas for future events. Also, on April 12th, I'm sorry, April 12th, 2018 marks the ninth anniversary of Walk a Mile in Columbia. Over the past eight years, thousands of South Carolinians, including survivors, have walked with STSM and shown their support of ending violence in our state. Walk a Mile has given a voice to an experience shared by 1 in 4 women and 1 in 33 men. Last year alone, 1,500 superheroes walked a mile for sisters, brothers, parents, grandparents, classmates, coworkers, daughters, sons, neighbors, cousins, uncles, friends, spouses, and partners, and raised $80,000 for trauma-focused healing services provided by STSM. Again, this is on April 12th, 2018, and the walk starts with the grand marshal leading at 6:30 PM. Thank you so much for watching your town council in action tonight, and hope y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baker, are there any other announcements for tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I have some.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
On Thursday, instead of going to watch Wonder Woman, I was at Lexington School District's One Teacher of the Year presentation, and we had a lot of Wonder Women in there, and men, where we had the 30 Teachers of the Year from each school, and then they had a top 10, and this year's Lexington One Teacher of the Year is Alicia Clamp from Red Bank Elementary School. She's an ESOL and reading recovery teacher, so we're very proud of her and look forward to having her here to honor her. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy. Any other announcements for tonight? I have one I should have announced when Bill Shanahan was here and awarding the check to the chief for the Chili Cook-Off. Our very own Leroy Holiday in Utilities actually won first place in the People's Choice on the Chili Cook-Off, and he won second place overall, so congratulations to Leroy. He probably learned it from Alan back there. Alan probably taught him how to cook it, but congratulations to Leroy Holiday in Utilities. That concludes our announcements. Are there any questions from the news media? No news media here tonight. Public comments? Are there any comments from the public regarding any items on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, please. And you can pull that microphone down, too. There you go.
It's not more of like a comment, it's more of a question. So, I'm Evan Bowman from Boy Scout Troop 518. I'm a Star Scout rank right now. I need three hours of conservation time to advance to my life rank, and I would like to build two birdhouses for Gibson Pond Park, and it was my favorite park, bleh, park to walk my dog. I'd always like to, bleh, go fishing, like with a net to catch minnows there with my sister when it was like a full pond before the dam fell. And then I would like to know who I could contact to achieve this goal, or like to build these two birdhouses.
Absolutely. We'll put you in touch with Mr. Dan Walker, sitting right there in the red shirt, and he can help you get whatever you need, and we appreciate you doing that. We'd love to have you do that. And good news is, we're rebuilding that dam, and that pond will be back very soon. We're very excited to have that pond back at full pool. So, if you want to talk to Mr. Walker after the meeting, we'll be glad to get you all together and, and make that happen for you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, and thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other public comments for tonight regarding tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I do see we have a member that has submitted his signatures to be on the ballot coming up at the end of this month. If you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself, we'd be glad to let you do that at this time. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Bennett Casto. I am at 106 Palm Court, and that's, and that's correct. A little bit about myself, I introduced myself to some of you at the work session that we had, but who am I? I've lived in Lexington for 10 years, and I've had the same employer. I've worked at Lexington County for all 10 years, and I'm still there. I'm an attorney there, and I work at the Public Defender's Office, so had the same job, and so I've lived in the town. I've loved Lexington. I've always believed in, you know, what it could be. And so Friday was kind of a momentous day, because I mean, as you know how hard it is to get the signatures and that, and you're, you know, out there just hoofing it. I mean, there's just no, no other way to say it, but, so this phase is, is one where, before we turned it in, we kind of made our list and checked it twice, and we feel really confident. So, I've kind of described it in terms of, they're sort of grading, grading my homework assignment. That's really what it, what it amounts to, you know? So, we're, we're very, very excited, and so I'll make myself available at the end. If anybody wants to come and just sort of see who I am, get a feel for, you know, why I ran and everything like that, I'd love to make myself available.
Very good, Bennett. Thank you for being with us, and thanks for your interest in what goes on at the town and being a part of it.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Yes, sir, Ms. Manis. She has a question for you, Bennett, I believe.
Bennett, can you let the citizens who are watching this, and we know that a lot of people watch us?
Sure.
Can you let them know when the election is?
I sure can. That's an excellent point. It's, it's a special election, and it's May 29th, so it's one that we've tried to remind folks, and we've actually created some things on Facebook, so Look For Me on Facebook. We have a reminder there. It really will be one that is, is tough to remember because it's not in November, right? And so it's, it's something that could be overlooked, but it's wildly important, and just respectfully ask for everyone's vote.
So, it's important that our citizens go and vote on May 29th?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It is.
Very good. Thank you, Bennett.
Thank you.
That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Tuesday evening, April 3rd, 2018. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, too, several times during this week, and the video will be available on the town's website at lexsc.com.